Call this meeting to order. Seven P M. Adoption of agenda, if there's no changes or additions. Counselor Cutler.
Vote by Counselor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Adoption of minutes for May thirteenth.
I make a motion to adopt that our regular meeting minutes for May thirteenth is presented.
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Move by Counselor Zimmer that the regular meeting minutes of May thirteenth, 2024, be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. I hereby open the public hearing for bylaw seventeen eighty-seven. Ape?
Yeah, so council had first reading of this bylaw at the last council meeting. This is a land use bylaw amendment and in accordance with legislation, we have to have a public hearing before second and third readings. And so the bylaw and the public hearing were advertised to the public. We didn't receive any submissions for people looking to present. However, people are still welcome to speak to this bylaw if they're here, the public is. Prior to that, we should have a bit of administrative conversation about that. We have our ORC planner with us via Zoom. Katie, are you with us?
Yep, good evening.
Hi.
So, as we discussed at your last meeting, bylaw seventeen eighty-seven is an amendment to your land use bylaw. The purpose would be to add grocery store as a discretionary, development officer discretionary use, as well as to amend the definitions of food processing major and minor. This would allow the minimum square footage of a major facility to be up to twelve thousand square feet, where it's currently five thousand. And then the maximum of a minor facility to be twelve thousand square feet rather than five thousand. This would just allow for increased square footage for existing building, sorry, food processors who are considered minor currently, as well as opening up to potentially more possibility for new business without opening it up to that industrial scale. So if bylaw seventeen eighty-seven is passed, your land use bylaw will be amended and the development authority can consider applications for grocery stores within the C two district or for any additions or new food processing facilities which are minor in nature, subject to the requirements of the land use bylaw. That's all from me.
Questions, concerns? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this? I hereby close the public hearing. Delegation Clarus Home Coordinated Response to Elder Abuse Committee. Gabrielle.
Thank you for having me here today. My name's Gabrielle Kirk and I'm the coordinator of the Clarus Home Coordinated Response to Elder Abuse Coalition, CCR for short, as well as the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council. I'm here today to address a critical issue facing our community, the growing prevalence of elder abuse and the urgent need for comprehensive support services for our seniors. The CCR was established in 2016 in response to alarming increase of elder abuse concerns in Clarus Home. With thirty-six percent of our population over the age of sixty, it became imperative that multiple community agencies to unite in preventing and addressing these concerns. Our coalition's mission is to create a coordinated response model leveraging the knowledge, services, and expertise of various agencies and individuals to provide effective and efficient solutions to elder abuse, who are comprised of various health professional agencies committed to the cause, including Clarus Home Medical Clinic, Alberta Health Services, and the R C M P. Elder abuse, which includes financial, emotional, physical, sexual, and spiritual abuse, as well as neglect, jeopardizes the health and well-being of older adults. Often, multiple forms of abuse occur simultaneously. In Clarus Home, the most frequently reported types of abuse are emotional abuse and financial abuse. It's estimated that up to one in eight older adults in Canada experience elder abuse. Since the inception of the CCR, my role has grown and our program's activities have evolved. We now include education and awareness, case management, mediation, and prevention services. In 2019, we extended our support to Vulcan, helping them develop their own coordinated response model, which I now oversee as well. Over the last few years, I've responded to hundreds of elder abuse concerns in this area. When I began my work in Clarus Home, I was co-located with F C S S in the station just down the road. Working alongside F C S S was a privilege, as it allowed me to witness firsthand the diverse support services they offer and the profound impact that they have on their residents. The amount of inquiries they receive on a daily basis regarding financial support, housing options, tax benefits and credits, home support services, and health and well-being programs is overwhelming. F C S S is a vital resource for our seniors, providing crucial support and connections to necessary services. However, in 2021, F C S S experienced a reduction in staff from three positions to two, which has significantly impacted their ability to address the growing needs of the community. The increasing aging population, limited housing options, financial strain, inflation, caregiver stress, rising mental health and addictions concerns, and isolation has exacerbated the situation. This reduction in staff has limited the ability to address the full extent of the community's needs. There's a direct association between these challenges I just listed and the increased risk of elder abuse. So in 2022, we utilized one of our grants to budge the gap and fund a point-five F T E, senior service position at the Clarus Home F C S S office. This amounts to twenty-two thousand each year, so forty-four thousand over the two-year period. This role is crucial in connecting seniors to resources that contribute to their independence and quality of life. When low-income, isolated, and vulnerable seniors are connected with resources they need, they're more likely to live healthy, dignified, and independent lives with their communities. Research shows that the social return on investment is three to one when investing in senior support programs, meaning that for every dollar invested, there's a social return of approximately three dollars. This includes improved health outcomes, reduced healthcare costs, increased social interactions, and enhanced quality of life for seniors. However, sustaining this essential program should not fall on the shoulders of nonprofits. Our budget is limited and our funding depends on grants that change annually. If this position ceased to exist, the negative impact to our community will be profound. Clarus Home has one of the largest older adult populations in Alberta, and the aging population is expected to double in the province by 2036. The town of Clarus Home needs to think long-term with an upstream mindset. Investing in preventative measures today will save our community from greater social and economic costs in the future. Supporting our seniors is not just an immediate need, but a wise investment for the community's future. The town of Clarus Home is in a unique position to support these vital services. It is not just an opportunity, but an obligation to ensure the well-being of our senior residents. Therefore, I'm asking town council to consider funding a senior support position at F C S S starting November 2024. The investment is not merely a commitment to the dignity, not, is not merely financial, but a commitment for the dignity, independence, and quality of life for our seniors. So thank you for allowing me the time to speak today, and I'm happy to answer any questions before you continue the rest of your meeting.
Questions?
What's financial abuse?
It's the most common form of abuse that we see. A lot of times, usually we see it within adult children trying to take money, usually their senior savings away from them. We often see this in dementia cases where someone has power of attorney, they control access over the banks, and even here in Clarus Home, I did deal with one case that extended over a million dollars lost to the senior. There is a lot of financial abuse. I would say most of it's around power of attorneys, but it's also just people pressuring their parents for money, pressuring their neighbors, pressuring their friends, manipulating them, lying to them, things like that.
Questions? Counselor Cutler?
So when you talk about this position, it's a part-time position?
Yes, it's a point-five F T E right now.
So, and it's working beside F C S S right now?
Yes, so they're co-located in F C S S. They work directly with Barb and Starla there, but they are funded fully by us and really direction comes, it's a partnership with F C S S and ourselves with direction.
And so as far as the F C S S is concerned, that support system has helped them mitigate and be able to provide the services they provide along with these support systems for the seniors?
Yes, yeah, they've been able to, I mean, the amount of people that come into that office is overwhelming. Lots of times when I go in there, they're constantly with clients, and having someone there designated specifically for senior concerns has been a huge help to them.
Counselor Kettles.
You mentioned it's a point-five position grant-funded, so I take that grant funding is running.
It will be ending by the end of October.
Is there any prospect of a renewed grant, of, you know, trying for a different grant, something like that?
I'm always looking for grants. This was through the SIP grant, which is the government of Alberta. It was a project-based one, so it does end October 2024, and we can't reapply for that specific grant. Again, we need at least a one-year gap between the ending and then the start of a new, a new program. I am looking at other grant opportunities, but none that have been successful or aligned with the proper timelines and stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Cutler?
I sit on this board with Gabrielle, so I'm trying to feed questions, but it's, so again, one of the biggest concerns is we've seen a great need for this position within this community and very successful with this position, to have a nonprofit to continue to try to find funding and find grants and applications and those types of things is what is hard on this board to try to keep that. So what you're here tonight for is to say, hey, we've set it up, we've done the trial, we've seen the numbers, asking the town of Clarus Home to see if there's a way that we can fund it on a permanent basis to provide for our residents within our community.
Absolutely, yes, thank you. I mean, being a nonprofit, I mean, that's a realistic, that's a reality of all nonprofits is that our funding goes up and down and up and down. There's rarely ever consistent funding, but we know that this program works, we know that there's a need, and I think it should be considered as a, as a permanent position in the town.
I think Gabrielle herself applies for the same amount of grants as the town of Clarus Home does.
I do apply for grants.
And that's, they're always looking, right? And that's the point, is we're kind of at that point where the government's kind of saying, this is what you got. And before that position, I applaud you for taking the initiative to get this conversation started because we don't want to see October come around, oh, we tried and we couldn't find anything, so at least marking the conversation around what is possible is a great start, so.
Thank you.
Gabrielle's been very successful writing grants, too, so she's, she's a pro.
Yeah. But sometimes they're hard to come by, unfortunately, so.
Questions, concerns, comments? Perfect.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to action items. Request for decision, bylaw number seventeen eighty-seven, land use bylaw amendment, ape.
So, second and third readings of bylaw seventeen eighty-seven, land use bylaw amendment for the public hearing that we just had is on the agenda here. If you have any questions for the planner administration, now would be the time. Obviously, no comments from the public hearing.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler?
I'll make second motion for seventeen eighty-seven.
Counselor Cutler, question?
Move by Counselor Cutler to give bylaw number one seven eight seven, a land use bylaw amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion for third reading?
I'll give a motion for third reading.
Counselor Ross, question?
Move by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number one seven eight seven, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Correspondents, Honorable Rick MacIver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, ape.
Thanks, Katie. So, some correspondence here from the Minister of Municipal Affairs regarding Bill twenty. There's been a fair bit of conversation in this council chambers, as well as many council chambers across the province recently, about Bill twenty. They have, the province has obviously received some of that correspondence and the feedback from municipalities and from Alberta municipalities who have been advocating on behalf of urban municipalities throughout the province. Any thoughts or comments from council on this one?
Don't quite say anything, they're not listening.
I, oh, go ahead.
Counselor Cutler?
I read the amendments, but it just didn't, like, the amended processes, it didn't seem much of a change for a lot of the different things. I didn't see much of a difference, I didn't really understand, but.
Counselor Carlson?
I will, I will choose to refrain from a negative statement. Take it for misinformation. Misinformation. Well done.
Okay, moving on. Correspondents, Be Prepared Program, Emergency Management Exemplary Service Award, ape.
So the, there's some emergency management service awards, they are looking for nominations. A number of categories, they are seeking nominations for resilient communities, outstanding contribution to emergency management, there's youth category, search and rescue employees, and search and rescue volunteers. Provinces and territories are now accepting nominations for the resilient communities, youth, and outstanding contribution to emergency management. So if there's anybody that council would like to recognize or organize?
Counselor Zimmer?
Maybe on the search and rescue part, one of our localized, Kelly Fowler, does search and rescue, he's trained one of his own dogs, he's been part of the search and rescue for nine years, he's helped train other search and rescue dogs, so maybe if we can throw a shout-out or a nomination?
Nomination for him? He can do that? Just a motion for that?
Need a motion?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Kelly Fowler for the search and rescue category
Is that, is it just the search and rescue category?
Yep. Search and rescue volunteers, I think, hey?
Search and rescue volunteers?
Yep.
Move by Counselor Zimmer to nominate local resident Kelly Fowler for the exemplary service award, the search and rescue volunteer category through the Be Prepared Program.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor?
Meister, I would also like to nominate R D E M, Jason Hemmway, for outstanding contribution to emergency management. I think he does a good job of educating people, and he's always doing it with a great attitude, and I've watched some of the activities go on, and he's a great leader, I know it takes a team, but I think he's in a really good position.
I agree, we'll get him to write up his own nomination.
I wrote it up for you.
For which category?
That'll be for outstanding contribution to emergency management?
Yes.
Kareen's not ready.
I never, I try to anticipate, but I always, I can't anticipate anything. Okay.
Question?
Move by Counselor Meister to nominate Director of Emergency Management, Jason Hemmway, for the Outstanding Contribution to Emergency Management Award through the Be Prepared Program.
All in favor? Okay, correspondents, Alberta municipalities, letter to Premier Smith, ape.
So there's a letter to Premier Smith circulating from Alberta municipalities right now, and it's regarding provincial capital funding. At the Spring Caucus, the premier discussed capital funding from the province, two municipalities equalling three-point-six billion, and I believe there was a comment in there made that it's roughly equal to the amount of taxes that the, the province collects from municipalities. And so, on further investigation, it was shown that about half of that, three-point-six billion comes from the federal government. And so, they are, Alberta municipalities, they are just bringing this information to light in their correspondence, and looking for a view of the provincial property tax
Questions, comments? Take it for information? Moving on, correspondents, Alberta seniors, community and social services, active communities initiative grant, ape.
Yes, so this grant opportunity is currently receiving expression of interest for the Active Communities Initiative Grant. This, I had a quick look on it today, and it looks like primarily nonprofits, or societies rather, that are eligible for the funding. There's a few other eligible categories, but the funding can go to small to medium-sized projects, including indoor and outdoor skating rinks, community pools, indoor turf centers, pickleball courts, sports fields and courts, and other sports and recreational facilities. So in the past, we have forwarded this on to the Ag Society, and senior centers can be included in this as well. So I think we want to get the information out to community, the community hall group, might, if they're a society, might be eligible, those kinds of things, we want to get that information out to them, and potentially, working with the town on, on some projects that might be eligible, we'd be able to help them out administratively at least, work through that, so that's information to share with your committees.
Golf course? Moving on, we'll take that for information, moving on, correspondents, Clarus Home Social Center Society.
So this is a request to council for a letter of support for a farmer's market application. They are looking to organize another farmer's market in town, and like, sorry, through the actual farmer's market legislation. So they need letters of support from the community for that application.
It's on Tuesdays. Counselor Cutler?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to write a letter of support.
Question?
Move by Counselor Cutler to write a letter of support for the Clarus Home Social Center Society's application for farmer's markets on Tuesdays in Clarus Home.
All in favor? Approved. Moving on, correspondents, Dawn Sharp, in-camera meeting with A H S E M S delegation on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, ape.
So council held a in-camera meeting with A H S E M S in March twenty twenty-four, and Dawn Sharp sits on an E M S grassroots committee that is looking into the service and is collecting, I guess advocating for, for, is an advocacy group for improving the They're questioning the need to go into FOIP for that, for that meeting, and so they requested that any future meetings with A H S be in public, and if there's, I don't know, to ensure there's a good reason, I guess. Council did ask those questions when they came, so I think, I don't, does council have any comments or feedback on that?
Counselor Cutler?
I appreciate his concern, but, I mean, I will have a meeting with A H S if I feel the need to have an in-camera meeting for information purposes, but, I mean, I appreciate it, understand it, he can continue on doing his advocacy rule, and we'll continue on doing our work for the people.
Anyone else? Moving on, number eight, correspondents, Cliff and Audrey Jaeger, road and traffic safety concerns, ape.
So we have a letter to council from the public regarding the condition of some alleys in town. Behind the I G A is one that they've mentioned, which is a challenge. We are, the town is planning to do some work back there and realign the alley back there, but that's not done yet. Requesting a light at Highway two and five-twenty. And speed limits at the hospital, needing enforcement.
Take, no, I was just gonna say, I think we've beaten this many times. I know for those that aren't privy of some information, the light gets brought up a lot with people. I know this council's brought it up, the previous council, and I believe even the council previous to them. It's not like it's falling on deaf ears, it would be nice to have a light, but I don't think that's ever gonna happen from the answers we get from Alberta Transportation, who owns the highway, it's not part of the town, so a light will never happen.
We can, we can provide a response with some of the information that's been shared around this table, and some of the information we have on the work that we're looking to do to improve the alleys.
Thank you.
Just get a, get a motion for that, please.
I'll make the motion.
To respond?
To respond.
By letter to direct administration to respond to Cliff and Audrey Jaeger.
Question?
Move by Counselor Meister to direct administration to respond to Cliff and Audrey Jaeger's concerns.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, tax waiver, Royal Canadian Legion, ape.
So the town of Clarus Home has received a request from the Royal Canadian Legion to, regarding the property taxes located at four fourteen fifty-three Avenue East. This is a yearly request that Legion asks for forgiveness on the municipal portion of their taxes. This year, they are requesting- This year, they are requesting $1,349.89. Council's in favor, we've done this, council has done this since 2012. Council's in favor, we would require a motion to do that.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion, please? Councillor, question, councillor Kettles?
Moved by councillor Kettles to cancel the municipal portion of the 2024 property taxes levied on the property located at 41453 Avenue East in the amount of $1,349.89.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Tax waiver, Clarestown Medical Clinic, eight.
So similar to the last request, the medical clinic operated by the MD of Willow Creek is asking for a tax waiver for their municipal portion of their taxes for 2024. They are seeking tax relief in the amount of $7,163.15. This is historically done by council in the spirit of cooperation and to support, in support of health, healthcare in the region.
Questions, concerns? Have a motion, please. Councillor Ross? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to cancel the municipal portion of the 2024 property taxes levied on the property owned by the MD of Willow Creek located at 4215 Fairway Drive in the amount of $7,163.15. This cancellation is in a spirit of cooperation with the municipal neighbor and to support the Clarestown Medical Clinic and public health in our region.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Expression of Interest Application Rural Community Immigration Pilot.
Eight, yes, so we've talked a little bit about this recently, council. Our, our NIP Rural Northern Immigration Program, that pilot with the federal government pilot program has come to an end, well, or will officially end at the end of August. And so, there is a new pilot program, a second pilot program, called the Rural Community Immigration Pilot, and there's also a Francophone Community Immigration Pilot attached to that. We were under the impression that Immigration Canada was going to try to roll the pilot that we're a part of into a permanent locally administered immigration program. However, they are rolling forward with another pilot program, which builds off the program, so these are still non-permanent programs, but we do have the opportunity to submit an expression of interest for that second pilot program. And we have seen a lot of success with that program, we've got a lot, a lot of good programs, a lot of growth in the town through that program, the first round, and so administratively, we are set to hit the ground running if we're successful with another round of the pilot, and we believe that this is a great boost for the town, and we're recommending that council approve our direct administration to submit an expression of interest for the Rural Community Immigration Pilot.
Questions, concerns?
Sorry, bit of information for your consideration. Our boundary currently includes Staveley and the MD, so we will need supporting letters from them. That's how we would like to submit the application with that boundary, I think it's a 25-kilometer radius. However, if we can't get them on board, we'd still be interested in submitting, shrink the boundaries to just Clarestown.
Councillor Zemmer?
Do we know how much is gonna, is there any cost to the town for this?
We, yeah, staffing, we will manage that with existing staffing. We do have some funding currently for the support services and activities, for the immigration support activities and services programming. That does run out in 2025, so presumably that will get scaled back, some of that, some of those activities will get scaled back. And the staffing is currently funded by grant funding as well, and so the plan moving forward would be to roll those positions that are currently grant-funded into tax-funded positions. And we've had these conversations previously, council.
Sure, so there were no current increase to?
Uh, no.
No.
Sorry.
Councillor Cutler?
When we put an expression of interest of application, we apply, and then there's still a decision-making process once we get the information of the program, correct?
That's my understanding of it, yes. Like from, from council, from the council, do we mean? I believe so.
I do have concerns about applying for another immigration pilot project in regards to, there was, I don't want to speak politically correct, a lot of fails without check stops with the first pilot project. I'm just gonna use this as an example, we had to run it through the ACTDEV, I know the ACTDEV does not, is not in favor of running it through the ACTDEV again type of, I just want to make sure all those processes that we have the proper supports with support systems within the community or whatever that's gonna help, I do have concerns about how it runs. So I just, I, I don't mind applying for stuff.
Yeah.
As long as this isn't a decision of if we get accepted, we're gonna take it until we find out more details of this pilot project itself.
Right, so, yeah, it is, it is an expression of interest at this point.
Right.
So we would submit that. In terms of how the program rolls out, it would be very similar, it would be overseen by Economic Development again, and that committee, that's how it would be de facto structured at this point, through the Economic Development Committee to review the.
Applications and success rates and.
And that is, and I can appreciate that there are issues and concerns, that is a pretty standard way for it to run in communities, so I'm not sure what, what options we would have to vet, and maybe other communities are doing, have done it a little differently. We could potentially look into that, vetting the applications or approving the applications.
I do have big concerns about another pilot project without the proper support systems.
And I would counter that with the support systems that we have had from Willow Creek Immigration Services, the Catholic Immigration Services. We've seen many assumptions of potential issues that have neither been proven or substantiated, but tend to happen in a community of our size, and realizing that there is going to have to be some redevelopments within our ACTDEV committee and our ACTDEV program in order for economic development to even succeed in this community. I, I would counter that this is an essential component to that success. So I would strongly recommend that we proceed with a letter of interest.
Questions, concerns? Councillor Carlson? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to direct administration to submit an expression of interest application for the Rural Community Immigration Pilot and draft a letter of support to be signed by Mayor Brad Schlossberger.
All in favor? Approved.
Opposed?
Opposed. Councillor Cutler? Request for decision, GIS Ortho Photos Subdivision Project, eight.
So we are looking for a couple of out-of-budget expenditures, council. Two projects out of the Development Department that came through after the 2024 budget approval. So the first one, at the April 22 council meeting, council made a motion to begin the process of removing the municipal reserve to correct lot lines from an old development issue at Willow Park. This goes back about 20 years-ish, and so the process of advertising has begun, and we actually received a, a cost today of $36.80 is what the cost will be for, for that work. The subdivision costs. So because it was an unbudgeted project, we, we would like a motion from council to approve the out-of-budget expenditures for those subdivisions, and recommend that they come from land reserve, the town's land reserves. Additionally, the MD of Willow Creek is doing their aerial GIS photos this year, and we are looking to piggyback onto the work that they're doing and have them do an aerial photo for the town. As you can see in the attached photo, our aerial photo currently doesn't capture the most recent annexation. And this is one thing that came through to us after budget approval as well. It has been three years, it's kind of standard, when you would want those ortho photos updated every three, four years. And so, the cost for that is $5,429, and we're also recommending that be paid out of the land reserves.
Questions?
So if we, if we don't.
Councillor Kettles?
I'm happy to move the first one for the correction line for $5,000.
Councillor Zemmer?
I just had a question, so if we don't piggyback off the MD, it'll be a few years before we can do our own again?
Yes, or potentially doing our own at a more significant cost. I don't know what that would be, but we would be on our own to get it done whenever we wanted to.
With that, I know we've got our new area to the North, where the area structure plan approved. We've got one that should be potentially finished within this year, I would hope, expect, pray for. Will those lands be in that photo as well, so we can proceed with it when it, when it is time?
Yes, we'll make sure those ones are in there, I think they currently are, this picture doesn't show, show it accurately.
So we'd have North Point and Evolution within, within that working space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're currently not in there?
Well, the way this screen capture is, you can see North Point's not in there, but it currently is on our, on our GIS, yes. But we'll just make sure that it's, it's in there for sure.
Questions? Could I have a motion to approve the out-of-budget expense for the completion of the Willow Park Subdivision Project up to $5,000? Councillor Kettles?
Moved by councillor Kettles to approve the out-of-budget expense for the completion of the Willow Park Subdivision Project up to $5,000 to be paid out of land reserves.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have most approved out-of-budget expense for GIS photos in the amount of $5,429? Councillor Ross? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to approve the out-of-budget expense for the GIS photos in the amount of $5,429 to be paid out of land reserves.
All in favor? Opposed? Approved. Request for decision, Appointing Assessor by Name, eight.
Yeah, so the town is required to appoint the assessor by name, and legislatively, we're required to do that every year. Our assessment company is Benchmark Assessment Consultants out of Lethbridge, and our assessor is Logan Weyloggi, and we, this is kind of a formality, we have the contract with them for another four or so years, and so we've got that service locked in place, but legislatively, we do need to have that person who's doing it appointed, so we're looking for a motion for that.
Would like to make that motion. Councillor Carlson? Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to appoint the town's current assessor, Logan Weyloggi, as an employee of Benchmark Assessment Consultants, Inc., as the assessor for the town of Clarestown for the 2024 assessment year.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Flag Policy, eight.
So we have for your consideration here a new policy, council, Flag Policy 5.9.10. We're proposing this policy that will direct the organization on the half-masting of flags at the town-owned facilities, approximately 13 flags, and the general displaying of flags. So we currently don't have a policy directing administration on this matter. There is, at times, some confusion in the community, and admittedly in the organization, when we should be doing this, and so we have developed a policy here. I'll just review some of the highlights of it. We will be identifying the day of mourning, which is April 28, and Remembrance Day as the only recurring days of the year that we half-mass the flags. Other unplanned days would be notification of death of the sovereign, governor general, prime minister, lieutenant governor of Alberta, premier of Alberta, sitting MP representing the riding, the sitting MLA representing the riding, a sitting member of council, or a town of Clarestown employee who dies in line of duty. So generally, this would sync with Heritage Canada's guidelines for half-masting. However, we do have one, one thing to know here is that when the half-masting falls on the weekend, we currently don't do it exactly as, as is recommended by Canadian Heritage, we do it on the last working day before, and then we'll raise the flags on the first working day afterwards. That is done for operational and budgetary purposes. So that's what we're suggesting that we do. If council would like us to actually follow the, the letter of the law, so to speak, we can do that, it would just involve us coming in on weekends, having staff come in on weekends to do that. It's not a significant cost overall, and so, but it is, there would be a little bit of overtime associated with that. When it does happen, when the half-masting should be done on a weekend, there is a bit of a budgetary implication for that, so. The policy went to the Admin Services Committee at the beginning of the month, and they recommended that it come to council for consideration.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll motion it.
Councillor Ross? Question?
Moved by councillor Ross to approve policy number 5.9.10, the town of Clarestown's Flag Policy, effective May 27, 2024.
All in favor? Approved.
Opposed?
Opposed. Request for decision, hiring policy update. Abe?
So, yeah, this one is an update to the town's hiring policy. Essentially, we are looking to improve communications between managers when we hire internally and, and someone moves from one department to another. We currently encourage people, employees rather, to apply for positions internally when they come up. And our, the town's policy is to hire the best qualified person for the job. And so, if that happens to be someone internally, then, then we'll do that. The idea there is to retain people and to, well, the idea is actually to hire the best person for the job. But there are some advantages in retaining people and engaging staff who are looking, potentially looking to move on, if there's an opportunity to move somewhere else in the organization, to, to retain them. So, we do have, we have created some provisions here that would require a hiring manager who selects an existing employee from another department to reach out to the outgoing manager, and to have that conversation. Once they've determined, that hiring manager has determined that they are selecting the employee for the position, the existing employee, to reach out and connect with the departing manager on timing of the transfer and the best timing for, for that department. Essentially, is, is a courtesy just to arrange a least painful transfer from one department to another. Doesn't give the outgoing manager the ability to say no, but it does give them the ability to have some say. If it's a busy time and they need that employee for another month, and the, the hiring manager can wait, then they can coordinate that. And we previously didn't have that in the policy, so. Think, we think it's an addition, a good addition to the policy. This one also was reviewed by the Admin Services Committee at the top of the month.
Questions, concerns?
Are the departments, they like this idea?
Mike?
Yeah.
I did turn it off, sorry. The departments are okay with this type of?
Yes, generally speaking, there may be some different opinions from some staff members on how to do things, but they'll, they'll buy in.
It's not gonna open up doors for like chicken hawk and a bird dog and other employees?
No, no. I mean, that's an existing, that's an existing Right. We, we have, we already encourage staff to apply for internal postings, right? So, that process, non-formal process is already in place. This actually just helps the coordinating of that. If it, if there is a transfer, it helps the coordination of it.
Essentially, for those that may not be aware of the impact, it, it lays out how to communicate the impact and transfer through it. It makes sense, leaves everybody's eyes open. I'm willing to move.
Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to approve the updated hiring policy number 1.0.01 for the Town of Clarstone, effective May 27, 2024.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, CAO report. Abe?
Yeah, any questions from council? These are compiled by ten or eleven representatives in the organization, managers and employees and staff over their areas of operations.
Questions, comments?
Just congrats to Deputy Chief Duros for his promotion.
Good, good man. Really? You betcha.
Information brief, council committee report. Abe?
Yes, this is your committee report on your activities, council. So, it's your time to, your time to shine here.
Thank you to everyone who submitted. Take it for information, unless somebody has something that they want to add. Okay, information brief, council resolution status. Abe?
Just update on the status of previous council resolutions. Got a couple in progress there. The Terry Fox run, you recall, we're trying to, the town is trying to recruit a new director or coordinator for that run. So, we are working, reaching out to groups and, and sharing the message when we can. Abe and Blair and Abe, oh, myself and, and a couple other staff members are working, actively working on public participation plans as well.
All right. Could I have a motion to adopt the information items? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera, please.
I'll make the motion to go in, in camera.
First one?
Second.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to go in camera at 7:57 PM for the following items, A, personal privacy, FOIP Section 17, B, advice from officials, FOIP Section 24.
All in favor? Opposed? Approved. Camera off. Motion to come out of in camera, please. Out of in camera. Who's gonna make it? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to come out of in camera at 9:53 PM.
All in favor? Approved. No. Motion on personal privacy, FOIP Section 17. I'll make that motion. Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to direct administration to vary the order to remedy number DOG-006 in the following ways. Zero, sorry, 0046, in the following ways, to remove all contraventions other than the contraventions that reference dogs owned in excess of three, to extend the timeline for compliance by one year to May 27, 2025, and to add the requirement to license existing dogs.
All in favor? Opposed? Approved. Motion to adjourn? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson at the meeting adjourned at 9:54 PM.
All in favor? Hurry. Camera off, please.